...in 2015 at seven o'clock in the evening to act on the following articles. Article one, to elect a moderator.
I nominate Richard Nass.
Richard Nass has been nominated, seconded by Judy. Are there any other nominations for moderator? Okay, seeing none, we will close them and as always, vote for moderator by voting from ballot. And then vote for three others. One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Good evening, thank you all for coming.
School meeting, plus, I think it's school meeting plus, and it looks like we have an extra article on solid waste, is that right Ted? Okay. So, we'll follow as we usually do unless there's objection, the main moderator's manual, which is a very simple parliamentary procedure. Is anybody object to that? Okay, we'll do as we normally do and follow the guidelines offered for the parliamentary part of this meeting. Before we get started, we have the potential for some of our school folks to, be necessary they speak, or maybe they want to speak, so what we try to do is to recognize that possibility at any time. So, these folks, Robert England is the superintendent who is here, thank you. Trish, Trish Bovis, the principal. Kim Oliver, finance person is here. Joy Keely, Joyce, Joy Keely. Jennifer Bruce, our town clerk. So, all these folks are non-residents of Acton, so unless there's objection, we'll allow them to speak if it becomes necessary. Anybody object to that? Okay. Also, in the last two days, we've lost a couple of our really old-time town employees. Gertan King died a couple of days ago, I think, maybe Sunday, Friday? And yesterday, Urban Hillsborough passed away. So, these guys have been around a long time, have served the town of Acton well for a long time, so unless there's objection, let's have a moment of silence in memory of these two folks. Thank you. Okay, to conduct business today, you've got two pieces of paper you were handed when you came in. One for voting purposes, when you vote, you need to hold up the red card, okay? And there's also a written ballot, is the, one of the last school articles here requires a written ballot. And so, when we get to that, you're gonna have to mark that whatever way you want, yes or no? And you're gonna do that and bring it up to the front here along with your red card, so that we know you're an authorized voter, so when you come up to cast your ballot, do so with your red card. Okay. I think we're ready to get going. You'll notice that all the, all the school groups, all of the school articles are open articles. That means you have the opportunity to go up or down on these articles. Up. They're open articles. So, in other words, the article does not state the amount of money, so the meeting can go up or down. So, we're, we'll take a motion, most likely, since there's been no controversy between the school committee and the warrant financing committee, we'll take a motion. Motion will have to state the amount of money, okay? So, it'll be to raise and appropriate whatever the motion is, and we'll have the discussion on it and vote on that. Okay, Article two, see what some of the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for regular instructions. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I need that the town raise and appropriate the amount of, recommended by the school committee, in the amount of $2,743,579.
It's moved and seconded on Article two, that we raise and appropriate $2,743,579. Is there any comments, discussion, and questions on Article two? See now, the motion on Article two is to raise and appropriate $2,743,579. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your red cards. Thank you. Cards down, those opposed. Article two is passed at two, that the stated amount $2,743,579. Article three, to see what some of the town will authorize the school committee to expend for special education, is there a motion on Article three?
Mr. Moderator, I recommend that we raise and appropriate $883,856 as recommended by the school and the warrant finance committee.
Okay, great, Judy, except, you're making a motion, right? So, you're moving, not recommending, you're moving.
I'm moving.
You moved, okay, you're recommending, that's why.
I make a motion.
You moved, okay, catch it.
I make a motion.
Moved and seconded on Article three, to raise and appropriate $883,856. Other questions or comments on Article three? See now, the motion on Article three is to raise and appropriate $883,856. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your red cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article three is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article four, see what some of the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for career and technical education. Judy?
I recommend that we, I make a motion that we recommend zero dollars for this, this doesn't apply to elementary education.
Okay, the move and seconded on Article four, to adopt the school committee's recommendation, which is zero dollars. Any questions or comments on Article four? See now, the motion on Article four is to raise and appropriate no dollars. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Hands down, those opposed. Article four is adopted at zero dollars. Article five, to see what some of the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for other instructions. Judy?
I make a motion that we raise and appropriate the amount recommended by the school committee, $43,163, which is also the same amount as recommended by the warrant finance committee.
It's been moved and seconded on Article five, to raise and, are you all right?
Yeah. There's no raise and appropriate in the article.
No. Well, we're making a motion to raise and appropriate, I think that's the right word.
Raise and appropriate.
Okay.
To make sure it doesn't get double paid. We use just the correct word.
Yes, we decide, Judy and I decide.
To make sure I'm gonna do it right. Well, the attorneys, I disagree, you may feel the order should be authorized until it gets to that article, we are actually gonna raise and appropriate.
Oh, okay. Are we all right? That finance person on that, okay. All right.
We're raising and appropriate, we're authorized.
Authorized to expend.
That would be fine.
Okay, yeah, you're, the clerk is right, it's a good thing you're here. All right, Judy, we'll accept what we've done and move to...
I have to say, that's the first one.
Okay. So, we're gonna do as it says here, authorize, okay?
What article we on five?
We are, we're gonna do five, we're gonna take a motion on five.
I make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of $43,163.
It's been moved and seconded on Article five, that the school, that the school committee expend for other instruction, $43,163. Are there questions or comments on Article five? See none. All those in favor of Article five, which is to authorize the school committee to expend $43,163, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article five is adopted, to authorize the school committee to expend $43,163. Article six, to see what some of the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for student and staff support. Judy?
Mr. Moderator, make a motion that we expend the amount of $351,638 as recommended by the school and the warrant finance committee.
It's been moved and seconded on Article six, to authorize the school committee to expend $351,638. Are there comments or questions on Article six? See none. All those in favor of the motion, to authorize the school committee to expend $43,163, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article six is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article seven, to see what some of the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for system administration. Judy?
I make a motion that we authorize the spending of $230,440 as recommended by the school committee.
It's been moved and seconded on Article seven, to authorize the school committee to expend $230,440. Are there comments or questions on Article seven? See none. All those in favor of raising, authorizing the school committee to expend for system administration, $230,440, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article seven is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article eight, to see what some of the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for student and staff support. Judy?
Mr. Moderator, make a motion that we expend the amount of $351,638 as recommended by the school and the warrant finance committee.
It's been moved and seconded on Article six, to authorize the school committee to expend $351,638. Are there comments or questions on Article six? See none. All those in favor of the motion, to authorize the school committee to expend $351,638, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article six is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article seven, to see what some of the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for system administration. Judy?
I make a motion that we authorize the spending of $230,440 as recommended by the school committee.
It's been moved and seconded on Article seven, to authorize the school committee to expend $230,440. Are there comments or questions on Article seven? See none. All those in favor of raising, authorizing the school committee to expend for system administration, $230,440, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article seven is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article eight, to see what some of the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for school administration. Judy?
I make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of $177,275 as recommended by the school committee.
It's been moved and seconded on Article eight, to authorize the school committee to expend $177,275 for school administration, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article eight is passed as recommended by the school committee. Article nine, to see what some of the town will authorize the school committee to expend for student transportation. Judy?
I make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of $258,000 as recommended by the school committee.
It's been moved and seconded on Article nine, to authorize the school committee to expend $258,000 for student transportation. Are there questions or comments on Article nine? See none. All those in favor of raising, authorizing the school committee to, to expend $258,000 for, for student transportation, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article nine is passed as recommended by the school committee. Article ten, see what some of the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for facilities maintenance. Judy?
I make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of $407,638 as recommended by the school committee.
It's been moved and seconded on Article ten, to authorize the school committee to expend $407,638 for facilities maintenance. Are there comments or questions on Article ten? See none. The motion on Article ten is to authorize the school committee to expend $407,638 on facilities maintenance. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article ten is passed as recommended by the school committee. Article eleven, to see what some of the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for debt service and other commitments. Judy?
I make a motion that we authorize zero dollars for debt services.
It's been moved and seconded on Article eleven, to authorize the school committee to expend zero dollars for debt service and other commitments. Are there comments or questions about this article? See none. The motion on Article eleven is to authorize the school committee to expend zero dollars for debt service and other commitments. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article eleven is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article twelve, to see what some of the town will authorize the school committee to expend for all other expenditures, including nutrition. Judy?
I make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of $125,271 as recommended by the school committee.
It's been moved and seconded on Article twelve, to authorize the school committee to expend $125,271 for all other expenditures, including nutrition. Are there questions or comments on Article twelve? See none. The motion on Article twelve is to authorize the school committee to expend $125,271 for all other expenditures, including nutrition. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article twelve is passed as recommended by the school committee. Article thirteen, this is, no, here, Articles thirteen and fourteen, raise funds for the proposed school budget. Article thirteen, to see what some of the municipality will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, which is $3,432,619.25, to see what some of the municipality will raise as the municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public, public education from kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, in accordance with the main revised statute Title 20A, Section 15688. Judy?
I make a motion that we raise and appropriate the amount of $3,128,593.
It's been moved and seconded to raise and appropriate $3,128,593. Are there comments or questions on Article thirteen?
Yes.
Okay, I see a difference here. Tom Gore, yes.
I have a private discussion with Judy.
Sure.
And maybe...
There's a difference here, obviously, in the school committee's recommendation, and as everybody can see. So, we're attempting to resolve the difference. Ken?
Thank you. This is the way.
So, are we gonna redo the motion now?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, we're gonna pull back on the motion that we did, and I assume the second here is okay with that?
Yes.
You are? Good. Okay. Mary? Mary's okay with that too? Okay.
I make a motion that we raise...
Right, let's go, we're on thirteen now, right?
On thirteen.
Okay. Your motion is?
My motion is, I recommend that we raise $3,128,593 and appropriate $3,432,619 as recommended by the warrant finance committee.
It's been moved and seconded on Article thirteen, that we raise $3,128,593 and appropriate $3,432,619 for education in Acton, kindergarten through grade twelve. Are there questions or comments on Article thirteen? See none. The motion is to raise $3,128,593 and appropriate $3,432,619 for education in Acton, kindergarten through grade twelve. Are there questions or comments on Article thirteen? See none. The motion is to raise $3,128,593 and appropriate $3,432,619 for education, kindergarten through grade twelve. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article thirteen is adopted as recommended by the warrant and finance committee. Article fourteen, this is the part of the meeting that requires a written ballot, so just to review, everybody that's here, Mr. Resident should have the white ballot, which will let you know as soon as we talk about the article whether, that you should vote yes or no. Bring it forward at the appropriate time with your red cards and drop it in the box, and we'll count them. And I think what we normally do is do the counting and then move on. We don't, we, we do the counting and announce the result before we move on, okay, which won't take long. Article fourteen, to see what some of the municipality will raise and appropriate an additional local funds, recommended, $1,662,445, that exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model by a recommended $2,022,267, as required to fund the budget recommended by the school committee. Okay, the school committee recommends, now I think at this, at this point, it's your turn. Make a motion.
I make a motion that we raise an additional $1 billion, raise and appropriate, an additional $1,662,445 for local additional funds, and, and the reason for that is, the essential programs and services allocation model does not fully support all the costs of pay twelve program. These funds supporting programs are not included in the essential plans and services, and I'd also like to read the warrant and finance committee's recommendation, which is the same amount as ours, but it also mentions in there that it covers the costs of kindergarten school nutrition, high school student transportation, and other programs and services that are not included in DPS one.
All right, so we got, we're gonna, we have a motion on Article fourteen, and I'll attempt to describe the motion here, okay? It looks to me like a combination of the two, the amounts are the same.
Well, the, the amount is the same. I just, the, the warrant finance committee wanted to be sure that people understood that, and they put their own explanation there, and, and wanna recognize the fact that they, they like to let people know why they're raising this.
Okay. The motion, now I'm gonna focus on the amounts we're, we're raising here, and not the reasons, okay? There's obviously two lists of reasons. So, the motion on Article fourteen is to, for, to raise $1,662,445 for additional local funds.
Raise and appropriate.
Okay, I don't see, but anyway, this is, got to be a raise and appropriate, because I don't see that, that here, but...
It's an Article fourteen.
Yeah, okay, so, again, we'll focus on the article itself, okay, as opposed to the recommendations. The article itself, which is the key here, unless we amend it, is to raise and appropriate $1,662,445 that exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model by a recommended $2,022,267, as required to fund the budget recommended by the school committee. So, now, is the time, if anybody has a question or comment about that, to raise it now. Tom Gore, are you moving in this direction? No? Okay, he's just, okay, you already had one.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, no comments or questions. The motion on Article fourteen is to raise and appropriate the amounts we've been talking about, the $1,662,445, that exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation by $2,022,267, as required to fund the budget recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of that motion?
No.
No? Yes? Thank you. Everybody needs to mark yes or no on the little white, little white sheet we have here, okay? Yes or no, and you need to come up with your red card. If you don't have your red card, you're gonna get rejected.
That, from here, Mr. Sam, I just, I just, I just, you, yes? Yes? You feel the wire?
Yes.
It's live.
Thank you.
Last call on voting on Article fifteen, excuse me, fourteen. Article fourteen, voting is closed, we'll count and announce the results. We probably have to skip the ballot, just wait. Okay, the results of Article fourteen, forty-three yes, three no. Article fourteen is adopted as recommended by both the school committee and the warrant finance committee, is the best way to describe it. Article fifteen.
But she didn't include, she didn't give the consent warrant finance committee, she led up on her case.
Okay, Article fifteen, to see what some of the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2015, ending June thirty, 2016, from the school department's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. Non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the main revised statutes Title 20A, Section 15690, unexpected, unexpended balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools. Judy?
I make a motion that we, we approve the expenditure of $5,228,600 as recommended by both the school committee and the warrant finance committee.
It's been moved and seconded on Article fifteen, to... It's been moved and seconded on Article fifteen to authorize the school committee to expend $5,220,860. Are there questions or comments on Article fifteen? Seeing none. The motion on Article fifteen is to authorize the school committee to expend $5,220,860. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your red cards. Thank you. Hands down. Those opposed. Article fifteen is passed as recommended by the school committee. Article sixteen, shall the school committee be authorized to expend such other sums as may be received from federal or state grants or programs or other sources during the fiscal year for school purposes, provided that such grants, programs, or other sources do not require the expenditure of other funds not previously appropriated? Judy.
I make a motion we accept the school committee's recommendation and adopt the article.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on Article sixteen to adopt the article as written, as recommended by the school committee. Are there comments or questions on Article sixteen? Seeing none. The motion on Article sixteen is to adopt the article as written and recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down. Those opposed. Article sixteen is passed as written and recommended by the school committee. Article seventeen, to see if the town of Acton will appropriate the receipts of certain federal and state grants and carry any previous balances for the following special revenue accounts. And we have Title 1A, local entitlement, small rural schools, Title 2A, preschool and proficiency-based learning. Judy.
I make a motion that we accept the school committee's recommendation and adopt the article.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on Article seventeen to adopt the article as written and recommended by the school committee. Any questions or comments on Article seventeen? Seeing none. The motion on Article seventeen is to adopt the article as recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Thank you. Cards down. Those opposed. Article seventeen is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article eighteen, to see if the town of Acton will vote to appropriate the following revenues, balances carried in funds transferred to fund the food service budget in addition to amounts raised by taxation for food services in the school operating budget. And then there's some numbers here. School nutrition revenue was $70,000. It's a total of $70,000. And I guess that is part of the article. So Judy, what's your motion?
I make a motion that we accept the school committee's recommendation and adopt the article.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on Article eighteen to adopt the article as recommended by the school committee, which is the way it's written, including the $70,000. Any questions or comments on Article eighteen? Seeing none. The motion on Article eighteen is to adopt the article as recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down. Those opposed. Article eighteen is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article nineteen, to see if the town of Acton will vote to create a designated tuition and assistive technology reserve fund to transfer $150,000 from the, $150,000 from the school undesignated fund to the designated tuition and assistive technology reserve fund to authorize the expenditure of funds from that reserve fund. This fund is used for purposes of covering unexpected new residents moving in with high school students, homeschool students deciding to attend charter schools or the high school, and new residents with students having special needs. Judy.
I make a motion that we accept the school committee's recommendation and adopt the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded on Article nineteen to adopt the article as recommended by the school committee, which is the way it's written here. Are there questions or comments on Article nineteen? Seeing none. All of, the motion on Article nineteen is to adopt the article as recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down. Those opposed. Article nineteen is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article twenty, to see if the town of Acton will vote to create designated professional reserve fund to transfer $10,000 from the school's undesignated fund to the designated professional reserve fund and authorize the expenditure of funds from that reserve fund. This fund is used for the purpose of covering legal and other professional services for unpredicted legal issues. Judy.
I make a motion that we accept the school committee's recommendation and adopt the article as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on Article twenty to adopt the article as written and recommended by the school committee. Are there questions or comments on Article twenty? Seeing none. The motion on Article twenty is to adopt the article as recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down. Those opposed. Article twenty is adopted, passed as recommended by the school committee. Article twenty-one, to see if the town of Acton will vote to create a designated technology reserve fund to transfer $10,000 from the school's undesignated fund to the designated technology reserve fund and to authorize the expenditure of funds from that reserve fund. This fund is used for purposes of unexpected mission, critical systems failures during a budgetary year. Judy.
I make a motion that we accept the school committee's recommendation and adopt the article.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on Article twenty-one that we adopt the articles written and recommended by the school committee. Are there questions or comments on Article twenty-one? Seeing none. The motion on Article twenty-one is to adopt the article as written and recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down. Those opposed. Article twenty-one is adopted, as written, and recommended by the school committee. Article twenty-two, to see if the town of Acton will vote to create a designated health reserve fund to transfer $15,000 from the school undesignated fund to the designated health reserve fund and to authorize the expenditure of funds from that reserve fund. The fund is used for purposes of covering employee health insurance changes, including marriage, new family, et cetera. This may be used to cover any penalty charged to the Affordable Care Act. Judy. Motion.
I make a motion that we accept the school committee's recommendation and adopt the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded on Article twenty-two to adopt the article as recommended by the school committee and as written. Are there questions or comments on Article twenty-two? Seeing none. The motion on Article twenty-two is to adopt the article as recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down. Those opposed. Article twenty-two is adopted, as recommended by the school committee and as written. Article twenty-three, to see if the town of Acton will vote to create a designated security and safety upgrade reserve fund to transfer $35,000 from the school's undesignated fund to the designated security and safety upgrades reserve fund to expend funds from that reserve fund. This fund is used for the purpose of addressing security and safety issues identified in the long-term and strategic planning.
I make a motion. I make a motion that we accept the school committee's recommendation and adopt the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article twenty-three as written and recommended by the school committee. Are there questions or comments on Article twenty-three? Seeing none. The motion on Article twenty-three is to adopt the article as written and recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Thank you. Hands down. Those opposed. Article twenty-three is adopted, as written, and recommended by the school committee. Are we okay? We are?
We're fine.
Article twenty-four, to see if the town of Acton will vote to create a designated capital improvement reserve fund to transfer $40,000 from the school's undesignated fund to the designated capital improvement reserve fund and to expend funds from that reserve fund. This fund is used for purposes of addressing major planned capital improvements. Judy, your motion.
I make a motion that we follow the school committee's recommendation and adopt the article as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on Article twenty-four to adopt the article as written and recommended by the school committee. Are there questions or comments on Article twenty-four? Seeing none. The motion on Article twenty-four is to adopt the articles written and recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down. Those opposed. Article twenty-four is adopted, as recommended by the school committee. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to designate, to create a designated matching grant reserve fund to transfer $10,000 from the school's undesignated fund to the designated matching grant reserve fund and to expend funds from that reserve fund. This fund is used to maximize grant opportunities available to the Acton School Department. Judy.
I make a motion that we accept the school committee's recommendation and adopt the article as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on Article twenty-five to adopt the article as written. Are there comments or questions on Article twenty-five? Seeing none. The motion on Article twenty-five is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Cards down. Those opposed. Article twenty-five is adopted, as recommended by the school committee and is printed. Article twenty-six, sell amendments to the town of Acton solid waste ordinance being acted. So there's recommendations here. Ted, are you going to make a motion?
Yeah. Make a motion. We're going to adopt the article as written.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded on Article twenty-six to adopt the article as written. Now, the amendment is printed and it was available today, right? Because we all have access. Okay. So we're not reading the ordinance.
Please don't.
Please, please don't is the question. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt the selectman's recommendation, which is to approve the ordinance as written. Are there comments or questions on Article twenty-six? Seeing none. The motion on Article twenty-six is to adopt the article as written, which is the board of selectmen's recommendation. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down. Those opposed. Article twenty-six is adopted, is printed, and is recommended by the board of selectmen. Okay. We have the next step in this process. It's on your warrant. Question one, do you favor approving the town of Acton budget for the upcoming school year with adopted at the latest town meeting held on April 28th? And so that will be by written ballot on?
Tuesday, May 5th.
Tuesday, May 5th.
Mr. White.
At the town hall. Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting until that time, until eight o'clock, Tuesday, May 5th.
Is there a second? So we are adjourned. Thank you all for your kind attention. Can the school committee please stay? The request of the clerk. Number one. Number two, make sure you give your cards back to the folks at the desk on your way out.